Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 6:01 PM on the 20th of November 2025. I'm Mike Capuano. I'm the chairman of the planning board. With me tonight is our vice chair Amelia Aboff, and our members, Michael McNeely, Lynn Richards, and Luke Schuster. We have a quorum. In pursuit to the Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this meeting of the planning board is being conducted via remote participation. A video recording of the proceedings is available on the city's website or by emailing planningboard@sumervillema.gov. This meeting is going to be recorded. We have a couple of items on our agenda tonight. Some public hearings and some matters of other business. So first things first, we do have a written request from the applicant at 379 Sumerville Avenue to continue their case until the December 4th meeting. So the chair moves to continue that agenda item to December 4th, seconded by Amelia. Alvaro, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Ebov?
Aye.
Michael Capuano?
The agenda items continued to the 4th. We next have meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to review the draft meeting minutes? Does anybody have any suggested comments, revisions, or anything like that? Yeah, Amelia.
I just wanted to reconfirm that this was Jahan, who in fact opened and closed the meeting because I, for some reason, had thought that that was you, Michael. And so I just wanted to double check that someone had looked at that to confirm.
On the 2nd? I actually don't recall. We have a, we have a recording of it.
I'm, I'm sure it's, you know, right, if it was based on the recording, it just struck me that it would have been unusual for Jahan to open.
No, 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 it, it would have been because usually it's the clerk that does it.
Okay, very good.
The chair moves to adopt the draft meeting minutes of the October 2nd meeting, subject to confirmation of the actual person who opened and closed the meeting because we're now almost two months hence, and I have no idea whether that was me or not. Yeah, subject to confirmation of, of that fact, does any, seconded by Amelia. Alvaro, can we have a roll call, please?
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Ebov?
Aye.
Michael Capuano?
Aye. Okay. As we take items out of order at the discretion of the chair, we're bouncing around. Let us welcome back 44 White Street. If we could please have the applicant and their counsel and their team unmuted and shared and whatever else we need, as well as the case planner, who I think might be Sarah now, Kit. Sarah, it's always such a pleasure to have you with us.
Thank you so much. Yes, Kit was obligated at the Landies Committee this evening, so I am here in her stead.
Yeah, and it's also a pleasure to have you too, of course.
Oh, thank you. Well, actually, we started out with Sarah as our planner, so, you know, we've come full circle.
That's sort of why I got tapped.
I figured. But I, I would just ask that our architect, Narius, from KDI Be Promoted, as well as Steve Saragusa, he's our traffic engineer, and Jacob Simmons, he is the actual developer.
Everybody has been promoted to panelists.
Thank you. So, my name is Anne.
I love, I love the background. That is stunning. I, I used to have a like a beach background and it wasn't, sadly, it was not the actual beach.
Anne Vigorito, 424 Broadway, Sumerville, Massachusetts. I am the attorney for the applicant at 44 White Street. I'm joined this evening by Jacob Simmons, who is part of the development ownership team. Narius from Calsa Design and Steve Saragusa, here's our traffic engineer. So I know we did a full presentation back at the October 16th meeting, so I would ask if the board would like this.
Can I pause you for just one second?
Absolutely.
I forgot to make the disclosure that I was not present at the October 16th meeting. I have reviewed the video of that meeting. I have submitted my affidavit to the staff who will forward it to, to, to the clerk, so. Forgot to make that disclosure. I'm sorry. Proceed.
That's quite all right. So since Chairman Capuano wasn't here, wasn't there at the 6th, October 16th, if you like, or if anyone on the board would like, we can recap in any fashion, or, you know, the team is here ready to answer any questions, comments, and/or concerns by the board, and I will mute myself and wait for the direction.
I am happy to have you guys make any sort of presentation that you think is appropriate. I, I think we've been well, well briefed. I've, I've reviewed the video. I've seen my, my colleagues' questions. I have reviewed the, the written testimony that we've received, which I believe were, were two pieces. So I, I don't, I don't think I need any more from, from your team unless you really, really want to go.
No, I, I really think, you know, you know, the board was very intent that evening, listened and commented. I will add this, though, as a small notation. It was raised. I think there were some comments from the board about pedestrian safety. So Steve Saragusa, our traffic engineer, you know, during the building permit process, that he will be working close to mobility and they will, you know, work to create the proper resolution for that. You know, but I just, you know, wanted to point that out, that it, you know, we did discuss it as a team and, and, you know, it will be worked through during the building permit phase.
Hey, I see. Amelia, before I grab you, Sarah has her Simpsons hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's through you. I was just gonna offer to, if anybody has any questions, make sure that everybody received the supplemental memo that Kit had prepared and see if there were any questions about that.
Any questions on the supplemental memo? I appreciate it being forwarded. Okay, Amelia, you still have a question?
Thank you. Just with respect to, and I don't think this was addressed in the memo, but forgive me if it was. With respect to the traffic safety and sort of the details that will be resolved as as planning advances, since this does have the funny jurisdictional issue of being a Summerville property that backs onto a Cambridge right-of-way. What, what is the normal inter, like, I can't recall a case like this where we've had a transportation-type concern. What is the interface with the city of Cambridge? Is that Summerville mobility to Cambridge mobility? Is Cambridge involved at all? I would just appreciate understanding how both municipalities sort of touch, touch base with the project as it moves forward.
Through the chair, yes, there is coordination between, between both municipalities on this. And as far as the pedestrian safety goes, I think that's something that we can, we very often condition either in a sort of the alert system for lighting for pedestrians as, you know, that is tied to a garage door opening and closing. But, but yes, there is coordination between the two municipalities frequently.
Thank you.
I know that my colleagues have had the opportunity to ask some questions of, of the applicant and their team, and I obviously did, did not. I was, I was not present at that meeting. I'm going to reserve my comments and my questions until I make sure that my colleagues who have previously raised some questions had some discussion points. If they have anything further that they would like to raise with, with you all, to make sure that they are as informed as, as they feel like they need to be before we proceed. Yeah, Michael. You're on you.
There we go. Sorry about that.
By the way, I love that sweater.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I am a big fan. So I had a couple of things from the last meeting that I had kind of brought up, and so I just want to check in on, on if we've made any progress on those. So the first was bike parking. So I think in the presentation, you had listed that there'd be three parking spaces, and I want to know if your team had a time to think a little bit harder about that. Having one bike space per unit seemed a little low.
I'm gonna actually ask Steve Saragusa to address that. He's our traffic engineer, and I know he had some discussions directly with the developer.
Yeah, so we have talked about, and I don't want to step on Jacob's. I know I'm kind of sounding like I'm passing the buck here. But I definitely had some discussions about some additional bike parking potentially on that ground floor. And I don't want to, again, I would rather, I think it would be prudent to have maybe Jacob, who is the developer, and Narius, who would kind of be designing these, to speak a little bit further about what that might look like and how those might be designed.
Before we get into that, I, I'm glad Michael followed up with that question because that was a question that I had too. Could we get a, I think you all have the opportunity to share your, your screens and things. Could we get the rendering of where the bike parking is, is proposed and where you're looking on the site to potentially expand it? Just so we all know what we're looking at instead of just trying to picture it in our heads.
Really, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm just looking at some KDI. I'm gonna share the screen if you know what.
Thank you.
You should have access to share your screen, yes.
So this is the site plan, architectural site plan of what was discussed last week, and I believe Jacob will address.
Yeah, I guess. Thank you, everybody. Sorry. I was, I think everyone was trying to figure out how to mute themselves. I was in the same boat. There is, do you have the, the plan we talked about on the last slide? Because I, I want to sort of reference it and we, I was trying to think about this creatively and, you know, it, as you all know, it's, it's a tight site. Like, there's, to, to some degree, this is a there's, there's always going to be gives and takes, just when we're talking about a, a smaller site like this as opposed to some of the, you know, thinking about like the larger one next door that the Canvara folks are doing, that, you know. So my thought here, and I, maybe, I don't know if this has been done before. I don't know if this is sort of how the mechanism would work. But I've done this in other towns with sort of other options. So I, I had one in Brookline where I had a project where we, we were looking at how do we build a building that we feel can sort of meet the market at that time? And then move it to sort of, all right, future-proof it. In that case, it was a over, and, and, sorry, forgive me, this is a tangent. I promised I'm going somewhere. We, we were looking in that case at like fossil fuels and how to make the building fossil fuel-free in the future. So there was a lot of desire at that time for gas stoves, gas ranges. So what we did is we offered the buyers a, a choice of you can have a gas range or you can have an electric range, but we're gonna put in an escrow account some money set aside that will upgrade you to an electric range, sort of when people start to realize the technology was, was there. I say that as a tangent because in this case, I still feel really strongly that I'm, I'm gonna have a really hard time selling these units to first, to, to buyers if they don't have a parking space. But I also recognize that the desire of Summerville, you know, of what I'm hearing is long-term to try to move towards not having as much vehicular parking and having more bike parking. So the thought here would be all three of these spaces would be made available to the buyers, and the buyers can elect to have them changed to bike parking, and that could be done at purchase. And then I would set aside some money in an escrow account so that basically at any point in the future, they can also do, do that. And so the idea would be, this starts out as a project that I feel it needs to have the one-to-one parking to be marketable. I I, I feel that that's a sort of unfortunately, that's, that's the hurdle that, that I have.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I have to ramble here. No, no, no. So on, on, on the trend, on the potential transition from vehicular parking to putting in, in bike parking. I have definitely been in buildings, apartment buildings, then condo buildings, things like that, where there is a, a, a vehicle space, but on the wall in front of kind of where the, where the car would pull in is a, I don't know how to call it, like a, a wall rack.
A Seinfeld rack, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Something like that. So you could have the opportunity to have both a vehicle and a bike in the same
Sure.
space. Is that something that you've looked at?
It, and again, I, I'm not an architect, but I, I think that just sort of given the dimensional.
George who stands and pretends to be.
That's true. That, that's, that's true. I think given that there's not a rear wall here, there, it might just be tough to sort of make that work. I also am thinking about trying to meet some of the, the, the feedback last time that, you know, there was a I don't know, eventually we maybe move this to have less than one-to-one parking. So I would say we're open to looking at something like that. I'm also totally open to sort of perpetually letting this building eventually become parking-free, vehicle, vehicle parking-free. As people maybe move in, realize they might not need the parking, but to get them to move in, they need to be able to bring a car, at least initially, is, is sort of how, how I feel.
I, I get that. Even if there's no, is, is there a space, even if it's not necessarily in the designated bike area? Or is there a place where you might be able to do something like that, that would facilitate?
I, we can, we can, we can look at that. I'm happy to commit to that being.
Just because I don't, I don't want to steal, you know, you know, my, my colleague Thundoe was asking the question, but I, I agree with him, and I'm trying to think of some creative ways that you might be able to do both.
Yeah, maybe on that, that wall sort of at Plan South.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you only have, you know, three units, right? So it's like it's not.
Yeah. So we could do that. We could look at doing stacked, like a stacked bike area within the spaces themselves so that, you know, I, I know this because where I grew up, that's what we did. We had a, a a small condo in a pre-war building, and we, we, we built at the time a rack for the bikes, and I know that there's companies that make better products than, than what we were able to build at this point, but.
Yeah, look at some of the Green Line stations. They definitely have stacked stuff. I, I don't mean to take up all the, all the options. It was, it was Michael's line of questioning, so.
No, it's, it's all good, Mr. Chair. I mean, these, I think, continue to be creative about solutions here, I think, is, is productive. And I think that's ultimately what I wanted to see was some more creativity around finding ways to add more bikes. To be clear, I'm still not over the, the hurdle that these units deserve parking, and I know that we've had the conversation internally that we want developers to kind of come to us with an ask, and that's something that, you know, we kind of all agreed to earlier when we supported the ordinance change. But, I mean, when I look at this project, I just don't, I can't think of a better project to not have parking at in the city at this point. And I, I guess, you know, as someone who, who is in the mode of starting a small family, like, I don't, I don't agree with the assumption that you need to have that, that parking. And so I'm just, I'm still not over that threshold yet personally, but I do appreciate that there has been some creativity with the bike parking. I would ask that we get a little bit more resolution on that, like, before even considering proceeding, but I, again, I would do want to honor it that there's been some thought put into this. For a follow-up question, I also did ask a little bit about that safety interaction with pedestrians. I was kind of hoping that there'd be an actual plan tonight to see, because that, in my opinion, is a pretty serious risk, especially with children attending buildings up and down the street from here. So although I, I do think we can ultimately condition it, I'd like to see some, some details around that. Has, has the team, the applicant team done a little bit more detail on that?
This is Anne Vigorito. I know the architect working with the developer along with Steve Saragusa, our traffic engineer, had a discussion and, you know, Steve, who works with the mobilities in various municipalities, you know, would fashion what they would like. But I think Narius may have something he can show you as a preliminary, so I don't want to steal his thunder, so I'm gonna mute. And Narius, why don't you take it away? I know you're sharing.
Yes, hello, Narius, good night. Correct. We found the product. We took, took a look, a closer look at the, at the site, and we sort of found a location for some product that we're noting on this, on the sheet that could work. But I don't know if, I don't know if it was presented to mobility yet, but that's what would be probably the, the starting point for the conversation. So here's the location, right at the front door, visible from sidewalk, and with the light and maybe sound signal, I believe this one has, and with the detection and maybe garage door connection.
And if, if, if it's okay if I add a little bit more context to that as well. So it, these, you know, these are, this isn't, this, this doesn't have to be the specific product either. As Narius would mention, this is not, you know, been presented to mobility. This is kind of just something that we had thought up and found this, and, and it could be a good solution. I'm sure mobility has had some interactions with other developers that, that have used similar products to this. I do want to emphasize that this is not going to be a site that is going to be all night long, vehicles in and out. And so I know that that could be a concern of neighbors, of light and sound and things of that nature. These are, you know, programmable units that, you know, the, the audio can be programmed, you know, as loud as you want or as minimal as you want, depending on kind of the time of day. You know, for persons who are hard of hearing, there's going to be, or hard of sight, there's going to be that need for that light and that sound at all times. But again, there, there, this isn't going to be a site where vehicles are in and out constantly, even all day long, with three units. You'll get people out in the morning and back in the afternoon. And so I understood that there's a, a safety component to this, but hopefully, if, if that, if that answers your question, that's great. If you have other questions, please let me know, but this is not the final product, just a product that could be used.
And this would be located on the property?
I'm sorry?
And this would be located within the bounds of the property? This isn't something that requires coordination with the city of Cambridge to install? Or that, the indic, the location indicated on this plan looks like it's right on the line?
My understanding is it would be completely on the property.
Thank you.
Right. Or just shown on, on, on the property line here.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
No, no, no. I, I apologize. Through the chair, I would like to bring the, the board's attention back to the original staff memo. There is condition number 19 that the team will work with mobility prior to certificate of occupancy to make sure that there is a pedestrian alert system installed.
Understood. I just wanted to see a little bit more color. The, the level of safety, I feel, needs to be pretty high here. And again, if we're considering putting mobility in an area that we've, we as a city generally want to discourage this kind of mobility in, I want to make sure we're at least covering up a bunch of other bases in, in parallel, so. Do appreciate that, and, and thank you for the applicant team for preparing this. This is appreciated. I also recognize that the volume's gonna be low, so the concern of noise and, and light isn't that high to me, but the safety is. So just so I fully understand this, basically, the way this device works, as proposed, at least here, it flashes and makes noise upon understanding that there's a, a vehicle coming. So it, it behooves the pedestrian to kind of avoid the, the car. The car wouldn't see a signal that, like, there's a pedestrian nearby, right?
Correct. So it would be actuated with the garage door, so whether the, the vehicle's coming in or out, almost like your, your typical garage door opener for, for a single family. That would, at the same time, actuate this pedestal in this instance for vehicles only, but it would not, it would not be actuated by pedestrian movements.
Okay. And is it true there's gonna be enough space in the garage for a car to come out headfirst and not have to back out?
So in, in our correspondence and back and forth with mobility in our transportation access plan that we put together, we did have a vehicle backing up from the site onto White Street, and that was not a concern raised by mobility at that time. So that plan has been kind of vetted multiple times, actually, back and forth with mobility staff. So they've seen multiple iterations of that plan. And backing up out of the site onto White Street has not been a concern raised by them, at least to my knowledge.
Okay, that's helpful. I think for what it's worth, my concern is less about getting onto White Street. I don't think that's a terribly popular road for traffic. It's more about the, the potential blind spot of a vehicle backing up into pedestrians that just aren't paying attention to the signal. So appreciate that, that the team has looked at this a bit. Would love to, just for the record, and, and maybe for notes that are shared with transportation, hope that we think a little bit about maybe some options to encourage more visibility for the cars backing out to look for pedestrians, like whether it be mirrors or something else like that. I think that would be worthwhile, but I wouldn't stop an application based on this at this point. I think Sarah's note that the memo has that condition is, is probably sufficient at this point for me.
You see, Amelia, and, and then I saw Sarah, but unless Sarah wants to respond real quickly to something just now.
I'd, I'd rather let the, the, the board member ask the question first, so we're still on the target.
I see that this, I know that this is not the product that is being specified, but is simply an example, but I also see the note here that there's like a power supply to it. I would just ask, because this is a sort of unique or an unusual situation where we're talking about something like this in a property that will be managed as a condo and which is a relatively small-scale property. If there is an option that is a hardwired option that will require less maintenance over time, that a, you know, three-person, non-professional condo association won't have to take proactive measures to maintain that pedestrian safety after a couple of years, I'd love for that to get into the notes in discussions with mobility about what the most ideal product would be. I know it's minor, but I think that without a commercial property manager, it'll be, you know, less likely to be replaced if it goes out or something.
Something that can be addressed in a, in a condition for required maintenance? Sarah, I'm kind of asking you. Sorry.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chair. I was scribbling as, as, as we were speaking. Yes, that, that can be included in the language of a, of the condition. Sort of for the ease of maintenance. I just need to write that down. Okay. The, my other comment, if you don't mind, was going to be that the while mobility might not have expressed concern about the vehicles reversing out, I would like to point out that mobility is not in support of any vehicles here, and I'm going to presume that is because of And I'm going to presume that is because of the cramped motion and the possibility of them reversing.
Thank you for adding that color. I guess that would just kind of add to my, my concern about this being a vehicle-based design.
So on, on the board, who, who was here on ten sixteen? What questions, comments, would like to continue before I, before I go?
Your chair, I just had a follow-up comment on the bike parking discussion, if I may?
Yeah, of course.
I don't know sort of how you're, I'm not sure how the applicant team might be reading their room on the different, um, optionality around increased bike storage here. But as one member, I personally feel open to accepting this special permit despite mobility's recommendation of denial. If there is bike parking provided for all of the anticipated residents of this building. You've made this big case about these being three-bedroom units and family-sized units. And I think that means that this building should be able to accommodate twelve people. I believe that with the right bike parking rack system and with the idea that the bike parking become in a shared area, rather than necessarily like three separate bike areas per unit, you would be able to accommodate that. And, um, I, I lean towards only really being able to support the parking special permit if we were also sort of enabling the folks who are going to reside in this building to live, as Luke described so ultimately last time, in a way that is really bike-first with those cars, you know, available for weekend trips. As also I think the, um, Thea Butters had commented, you know, you can do a lot with bikes if you're committed to them. So that, uh, I'd love to sort of have you thinking about whether a commitment to accommodating a bike per bed in this, uh, you know, development is something that you think with the right design couldn't be solved.
Is that something that can be, this is just a logistic question, is this something that could be solved with the stacked bike rack that we were discussing earlier? I just don't know.
I'm picturing the like vertical racks that you have on buildings downtown for exterior that are just, I mean, they're harder, a little harder to put a bike up, but they're incredibly space-saving and it, when done in a professional installation. So I, I would imagine, but I obviously I'm not, I know that's a question for the design team, I'm just thinking of solutions I've personally seen.
Is this, is this something, yeah, Sarah, sorry.
I was gonna say, if I, if I may, this is something should the board choose to condition? We could write a condition that twelve, um, twelve bikes must be accommodated to sort of, based on, um, Amelia's project. That is something that we could condition if you so choose.
That was the question I was going to ask you. I would be supportive of that condition. Hang on, one, one second, one second, one second, Amelia had, Amelia, do you have any more questions?
No, I was just gonna say, I, I think I defer to Luke and Michael here as, and maybe even Lynn as, as people who are more dedicated to this topic than I. Thank you.
Okay, the, 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 the next hand I saw after you was, was Luke and then Lynn.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I actually think Lynn had her hand up, so happy to defer to her first.
Um, th- thanks, Luke, so.
It's a tan hand and a tan background, sorry Lynn.
Oh, s- s- sorry, I'll, I'll lower my hand. Um, I'll do the Simpson going forward. Love where the.
It's easier to see.
Of this, uh, conversation is going as a person who owns, um, five bikes. And, uh, yeah, I, I know it's a little, it's a little excessive. I, I keep thinking I should get rid of one, but they're like, they're like children, you, you can't really. Though I do want to, so I've got, I, I love where the direction of this is going. I do think that if, if it is for families, that, um, some of the bikes may be smaller than a full-size bike. And, and if we're gonna make this a con, and then I worry that, you know, as I see, it's three feet by eight feet, which is quite a bit of space, I could probably get, um, two bikes into that space even with the stacking. So, um, Sarah and the board, I'm wondering if we don't make a requirement of not necessarily twelve biking spaces, but, um, nine full-sized biking spaces with, with, and this is just a suggestion for the rest of the board, with the idea that along this wall on the rear setback mechanical closet area, that there's hooks for, you know, different sized bikes. There might be some oversized bikes, but there also might be some bouncers or, or little itty-bitties that could stack there. If we're gonna be requiring the developer to put in twelve, twelve bike parking spaces for three feet by eight feet, I, I do worry that that might not happen. So nine bike, you know, full bike spaces with the optionality for, for, um, three or more elsewhere, but, um, ha- hap- happy to discuss that and really want to hear what Luke has to say about that. Cause I think Luke probably has maybe not five bikes, but probably at least three.
Well Lynn, I'm, I'm looking right now and showing the bike area has eight.
Say what?
Says bike area, four spaces, oh, four, four, uh, four, sorry.
Four spaces, yeah, four, there's just four spaces.
Yep, a few, a few more.
Yeah, and so even if we do these, they do, do these racks, r- r- right? I mean, if we make it a condition of the permit, that, you know, there, there, they'll be legally required to. Twelve feels a click too, a click too far, given that there, there will be children. If we do nine kind of adult-sized bikes as well as space for, you know, small, smaller bikes where there's hooks that you might be able to go up to, you know, fifteen or sixteen or, or something along those lines. But it's, it's, uh, I, I just don't, I'm just trying to find that, that middle ground.
If I can just qua- qualify my earlier statement, my thought that twelve could be accommodated was in part based on the idea that these wouldn't, that this would need to become a common area, um, and that there, there wouldn't be, uh, internal divisions within the bike room space. Because I think that really changes the layout of sort of how many bikes can be accommodated. And again, I don't really know, I've just tried to fit a lot of bikes into a second-floor apartment recently. But, um, I, I don't know if that's, like, I think keeping them separated for the condo units might be part of the puzzle here, but I'll, I'll quiet down now.
No, that, those are, those are good points, Amelia, thank you.
What do we think is the appropriate ask of this applicant? Um, I, I don't know if it's nine, I don't know if it's twelve, I own two, um, and neither of them are in Somerville, so. And, yeah.
If I could, Steve Saragusa has quite a bit of expertise at working with mobility in Somerville on these matters. And he may, he has a few suggestions, so if, if, if it would be okay with the board, if he could talk, I think he might be able to give us a little better direction, because the development team's on board with all of this, but we just want to make sure mobility will be.
Before we, before we proceed completely apropos of not this, uh, there is a potential that at seven o'clock, this board is going to lose quorum for a reason unrelated to, to this meeting. So I just want to make sure that we proceed with, you know, the, the thought that this application, um, requires.
I won't, I won't speak long then. So I just wanted to kind of, again, you know, we've gone this back and forth with mobility and, and specifically about this bicycle parking and kind of the layout of that room and what that looks like. And we were able to get those four spaces in there. Um, I do know that mobility, and, and I'm sure the board knows as well, has, has pretty rigorous standards as to what these bicycle spaces kind of need to be and what they need to look like in terms of space. There definitely is ability to find wall space for, uh, for bike racks or potentially stacking spaces within that bike room. Um, but I would imagine that at least a few of these spaces would need to be non-compliant with the zoning and what the mobility standards are for bicycle parking. And so I guess the, the ask would be kind of what, what would that look like and what else would be needed? From a design standpoint and coordination standpoint with staff, to kind of get their, get the approval of non-standard bicycle spaces. Uh, because I know that that was, that's just been a, a very big discussion with them, not just for this project, but for multiple projects around, around the city, um, and trying to kind of find that room, um, to make that feasible.
Uh, through the chair, if I may, um, I was just, um, taking a quick look at the zoning ordinance. And I think it is a, is a mobility policy for the size of the spaces other than the percentage of cargo bike versus actual space. So I didn't see it off the top, in a sort of a, a, a quick glance. However, if there is, if it is in the zoning, the only way to, around it is to apply for hardship variance. And so I think that's something that might need to be resolved first, and whether that's another conversation with mobility and getting a letter from them. Or, you know, applying for a hardship variance depending on what the, the ask is. I'm, I'm, you know, not, not fully sure, but.
Yeah, and I'm, 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 I'm hearing, I'm hearing hardship variance and it's giving, giving me a little pause, so.
Yeah, I mean, because we would have to get the hardship variance before a planning board could vote. And, I mean, the only thing I can think of, and, you know, we've got about seventeen minutes until it's seven P M. Should we, from now until the next meeting, like Sarah suggested, get a letter from mobility? Because if this is something that they can support, I think it makes it easier for the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, please.
Um, I apologize for, I'm, I'm muting through, through the chair, um, that, if this is, if this is the, uh, where the board is feeling we, we want to go, I, um, I literally am not seeing anything that might trigger, other than the, the, the one thing that has concerned me is sort of the, the length of some of the spaces because of the twenty percent requirement of cargo, um, or tandem bikes. But that is the, the only piece I'm seeing in the ordinance that might, might give us, um, a little bit of heartburn. So I think having that conversation with mobility is probably a good next step to understand what their requirements would be.
Appreciate that, Sarah. Here, he- here, here is my thought, right? I, I, I wouldn't mind you guys having that discussion, because I think we are all kind of uniformly in support of increasing the amount of bike parking, and, and I think we need to figure out what that's, what that's going to be looking like. I will just give my thoughts as, as to the remainder of the application and, and to the request for the special permit. I'm ordinarily, I, I would be giving you pushback, because we do have, you know, zoning in place that, that says what you can and cannot do, um, as it relates to this, we have a, we have had, uh, policy discussions on this. There have been public, uh, yeah, public participation that says this is where we want the city to go and, and reduce the parking, particularly as it relates to transit-oriented areas. And this couldn't be any, any more transit-oriented than being basically on top of the T-stop. However, that being said, I think this particular project, uh, has two somewhat u- somewhat unique properties. One is you, White Street isn't ours. Uh, ordinarily, we would say, okay, you can just park somewhere, but it's not going to be feasible. Really to, you know, park on, you know, try to find a spot on, on Burnside Avenue and, and, and walk down to White Street every day. That's not gonna be something that's, that's likely. So that's a, that's somewhat of a unique circumstances, that you, you wouldn't be able to get a, a residential sticker that would put you on, on White Street. It's kind of part one, part two is, for years, the planning board has asked developers to build family-sized housing. And people give us pushback all the time. Well, I built a, you know, a one-bedroom, but it has a cubby hole and that could be used as a bedroom, so we're gonna call it two. Um, and we all know that's not accurate and, and not feasible. You guys are actually doing and proposing a project that is meeting the goals that we have been pushing for for years. And you didn't have to, you, you elected to do this, you, you could have put in more units. You, you could have, I think, gone up in, in height, you could have done a lot of things that, that you're not doing. To meet the goal that we have as a city and, and as a board. So I, I think it would be a, a, a little bit in, I wouldn't say bad faith, but it, it, I, it wouldn't sit right with me to say, thank you for doing what we've been asking you to do when you're not obligated to do it, and we're going to make it harder for you to market these, um, these units. Particularly in light of the fact that, I, I believe, and I'm, I'm not gonna speak for every single member of, um, of the planning board here, but from what I heard last, last meeting, um, and, and knowing what I have, is we're all generally in support of additional forms of mobility. We have some members on this board that, that are, um, you know, at, you know, much more, uh, a- advocate, uh, oriented towards, uh, bikes than, than some other members, and we all have cars. I think every, I, I think every single member on this planning board has a car. And whether we have kids or not. So to say that we're building units that are big enough to fit the families that we claim we want and not put in, and, and not give you the opportunity to put in a space for a vehicle, for, for, for a car that would likely be used by that family that we claim that we want. Even if it's on the weekends, even if it's, you know, every other Sunday to go to, you know, Market Basket. I, I, I think the reality is maybe they won't have a car, you know? It, it is a, it is a, 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 a location that would facilitate somebody maybe not needing one. But the reality is, they might need one, even if it's five percent of their, of their time. You know, ten percent of their time. And so I, I, I think for two spaces, which is what you need, I think pushing back on two spaces for an otherwise very good project, when you're trying to work with us on so many other factors, I, I would be supportive of moving forward with, with the application. So long as you can have that conversation with mobility about what additional bike parking could look like reasonably and with, with their guidance, so that I could have a clearer picture on exactly what, what, what it could look like. I don't mind having an open-ended condition saying, and work with mobility to maximize, but I don't know if that's where we're gonna be at with, with some of my other members, so, um, I would, I would obviously welcome further discussion on that, uh, where people are in further discussion with mobility, um, or other things. But that's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm at. I see Lynn.
Thanks, thanks, Michael, you summarized it, um, I, I, at, at least from my perspective, how I was feeling perfectly. A- additionally, I would say, um, to add to that, as we found out in diving into the regulations, that had the developers put in mixed use, had they put in five hundred square feet, that's not a lot of space, and I don't, and, and Sarah, the, the minimum may even be less than that. We wouldn't even be having this conversation, it would be three spaces by right. And yet we are over-retailed in Somerville and we have a dearth of housing. Um, and yet we are over-retailed in Somerville and we have a dearth of housing. So if we're gonna make it easier to build more retail when we have empty spaces, uh, empty storefronts right now um, and make it harder to build housing when, um, when we have a, a, a real need for housing, that just feels to me that that's something that, um, and I'll take this up with Dan of, of a, of a zoning fix that we should probably address more broadly. So, uh, Michael, I agree with you. I, I think that the, the parking should go through. And I liked how you framed it. It is kind of open-ended, like working with mobility to maximize the number of spaces that can, can fit in here, whether it's hooks on the wall for smaller, smaller bikes. Um, uh, I loved the zoning, um, recommendations on, on biking when I, when I read it. But in this case, if we were gonna require, you know, twelve of these, um, twelve of these spaces, you know, that, that would be dead on arrival. So how can we maximize, you know, the, the parking here, um, the bike parking here? So loved how Michael framed it as kind of more open-ended to, to work with mobility on that. So that's, that's where I'm landing.
Sarah.
Um, uh, Mr. Chair, if I might make a suggestion, a sort of a compromise, just for, um, discussion.
Saying my favorite word.
As there are four spaces shown in the bike area currently, uh, we've been talking about stacking. Um, perhaps this condition could at least say eight spaces, eight full-size bike spaces minimum. Um, and I, I'm gonna look to, um, the, the Steve or, or Narius to, I'm assuming there's enough ceiling height in there to be able to accommodate, um, stacking. Uh, but that might be a, another, another compromise that we get to, that the board is more comfortable with a minimum number of spaces with the conversation for mobility to continue and see what else is possible.
I will say, if you, i- i- do, do you guys think you'll be able to fit eight? I- i- is that something that you can propose to, to mobility in your next discussion with them?
I, I mean, I'm more than happy to, uh, talk with mobility and then obviously Narius and Jacob and the rest of the team and try to figure out where we can put these spaces and how best to do that. Um, you know, while still adhering to zoning and what those bicycle spaces need to look like. Um, I don't want to speak to height of, of rooms or anything like that, but, um, yeah, but I'm more than happy to, to, to have those conversations and make something like this work.
I, I, I appreciate that, um, Steve, because I, I will tell you, I, I think you're close to the finish line here. I think there are some, some concerns that we all, concerns and thoughts that we all have, that we'd like to make this, uh, you know, the best project that it, that it can be and meeting a lot of the, um, new goals that we have as a, as a city. And I think this would go a long way with, uh, with, with me and some of my colleagues if we can figure out a way to say, is eight the number? Is it, is it something different? Is it just not feasible for, for some reason that, you know, I certainly don't know. Um, I, I'd like to have that information. I think that would be helpful for the board to have, because I'm, I'm happy to try to move forward. I don't know if you'll have the, the votes at, at this stage in the game right now until we have that data. So let's, let's see what we can get done in, uh, the hopefully very near future. Cause I think, I think you're very close to the, to the finish line here. Yeah, and.
Do you think it's feasible we continue to the December fourth planning board? And that way it gives, I know next week is Thanksgiving, but, uh, I know Steve has a rapport with the mobility staff in Somerville and, you know, he may have some information. I mean, we can always continue again, but, you know, if we could continue to the fourth, you know, with the hope of having all the.
Happy, happy to do that. Um, I can't speak to mobility's availability, so, um, you know, I know, I know people are gonna be traveling for, for the holiday and, um, the planning board's gonna have a, uh, an extra agenda item or, or, or a few on the fourth as well. So maybe that's just gonna be a, a busy night, which is fine. Is that, is that the request to continue this to the fourth then?
That is, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense and I'm, I'm definitely supportive of that, um, especially if we can get to a place where um, we have all the information we need, um, and, and maybe we can move this, uh, speedily along on the fourth. So, with that in mind, does anybody have any comments, um, or questions of the applicant or of staff? Yeah, Amelia.
I was raising my hand for Luke in case you couldn't see him.
I didn't see, I didn't see Luke's, no. Thank you.
Thanks, Amelia. All good. Um, I know we're tight on time. Um, uh, in the broadest strokes, I've really appreciated the conversation and this is a good example of the board sharing different perspectives and, and getting, steering this to what feels like a good place. Um, two really quick thoughts, especially since it's like the, the, the team's gonna go back, um, before our next meeting. Um, I have learned the, being a biker, that really like the best car replacement is an e-bike, not just a regular old-fashioned bike. So one thought on my mind, and, and the e-bikes are the heavier ones that are tougher to, you know, get up on a wall rack, hanging up high. So I think where this is headed likely would satisfy this thought, but just if, if the design can have at least three spots, so it would be like theoretically one e-bike per unit that doesn't need the bike to be elevated, you know, that would, that would help at least each unit have like, have the best type of car replacement bike. Um, and then the only other quick thought was Amelia had the kind of elegant thought of, um, requiring a bike spot per bed, which would have been twelve, maybe twelve is just too tough. Um, and maybe eight is all that can get in there, and I'm sympathetic to, you know, if that's the, just the end of the day, fact of the matter. But getting to nine at least would have the sort of multiple of three for each unit. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Right, yeah, Luke, let's, let's see where we can, uh, let's see where we can get. I, I agree with you. The more, the more, the better. And, uh, if we're gonna have kids, make them have the e-bikes, make them lift them up on the racks. Build those muscles young. Amelia, maybe yours can do some, do some squats. Um, okay, good. The chair moves to continue this agenda item to December fourth, seconded by Amelia. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster. Michael Magnili.
Aye.
Amelia Ebaugh.
Aye.
Michael Capuano.
I, this agenda item is continued. We have one other item on the agenda that doesn't require immediate attention of other business. Um, which is chapter ninety-one, so we'll continue that. We don't need to vote to continue the other business to the fourth. We'll, we'll deal with it as needed, because we are about to lose quorum. The chair with no other business before the planning board that has not been continued. The chair moves to adjourn, seconded by Amelia. Roll call, please.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
Michael Magnili.
Aye.
Amelia Ebaugh.
Aye.
Michael Capuano.
Aye. Uh, the planning board is adjourned. See you all in a few weeks.
Bye, everybody.
Good day.
Thank you.